The Chamber of Commerce hosts these forums during the election season, every election cycle. We don't endorse candidates, but we help affect these specific business issues and create attention to the candidates, and give them the opportunity to address those many and sensitive questions. You have on all of your seats our two Q&amp;A local election guide, so this represents a Q&amp;A we have with the candidates in the afternoon today. The guide is also available on our website and contains an addendum from candidate John Scott. So we'd like to start with a couple of thank yous. Acknowledging is actually first. We have a couple of elected officials in the audience who'd like to acknowledge them. Mayor Sean Maury is here, Vice Mayor Manette Silver, Councilmember Randall Stone, Supervisor Maureen Kirk, Supervisor-Elect Daryl Lucero, and also City Council Member Ann Schwab is here as well. If I missed anyone, I will be acknowledging you later in the program. So we'd like to thank our legacy partners, the Chamber of Commerce, for sponsoring everything that we do, partnering with us on important events like the Candidate Forum. Our legacy partners are listed here. We'd also like to acknowledge our visionary partners, who again support year-round the activities in the Chamber and our community vision. Couple of, let's see, oh, and thank you, of course, to the Chamber of Area Recreation District for hosting the venue for us this morning. Coffee is provided by North Valley Ag Services, and our broadcast will be provided by DCA CMTV, who is in the back filming. Audio and video of the segment will be available on our website following the presentation. So just a quick overview for our candidates, everyone's been prepped, but we have four quick poll questions, and those will be just a quick raise of hand when you hear your answer called. We will also be asking four questions, requesting a two-minute response from each of the candidates. We have a timekeeper right here in the front, she's preparing her cards to let you know when you have 20 seconds left and when your time is up. Each candidate will also have the opportunity to close with a one-minute statement following a Q&amp;A. And I see Supervisor-Elect Tammy Riner is right, so I'm going to acknowledge her, give her standing. Let's see. So, audience reminders, it's really important that we maintain a respectful room. We're asking that you not audio or video before that's being done by the media in the back of the room. We also ask that you silence your phones at which point for the candidates can be very distracting. Media interviews will be permitted both before and after the forum, but not during. So candidates, if you're asked to step outside for a media interview, the answer is no, until after the forum is over and then certainly engage with the media. Campaign materials are available outside of these doors on a table, and that is an opportunity that we're providing to all the candidates. Okay, I think we're gonna go ahead and jump in.
So we'll be drawing names for the order of folks for each particular question. So we're gonna start with a quick poll. And our first response will come... Our first question is Proposition 6: Gas Tax Repeal, Support/Oppose when Declined State. So, support, again. Oppose? Decline State.
Could we ask them to stand if the words are forgotten?
Oh, sure, alright. We will have them again. If you support, please stand. No, 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 just the catfish. Oppose? Decline State. That makes sense, yes, thank you. So, we'll raise our hand. Let's raise our hand really high, okay, folks, instead of standing in the seat. Question: What is your position on a possible emergency shelter declaration? And we will start with Mitch Prover.
Thank you very much to the Chamber, thank you to the sponsors, and thank you all very much for being here with us this morning. This is a great opportunity to hear where all of us stand, and it's also a great opportunity for us to ask and dialogue. In terms of emergency shelter, it's absolutely critical that we declare an emergency shelter. Having spent years working on some of this arena, including on board directives for the Torres Shelter, I know these issues intimately. Without emergency shelter, it would be extremely hard for us to move forward with creative solutions to what is actually a very complicated problem. An emergency shelter is a very smart first step. It won't solve everything, there is no single solution to this issue, but without taking that step, we will miss an opportunity on a number of fronts. There will be funding that will become available if we declare an emergency shelter, which will go directly into service providers and allow us to start to address this problem in a holistic way. The emergency shelter declaration will also allow us to move forward with Simplicity Village, which I'm a supporter of. The work that CHAT is doing is extraordinary in our community, and we need to all support that work. CHAT, in partnership with Torres, is moving dozens of people out of homelessness and into temporary transitional, and in cases, permanent housing. That work should be supported, including through Simplicity Village. And again, a shelter emergency declaration will allow us to move forward with that. So I'm a strong supporter that that's a step that this current council should take. If it doesn't, then I will certainly help us take that step.
Thank you. Next to answer the question, what is your position on a possible emergency shelter declaration, is Matt Halloway.
Good morning. So the issue allows us to deal with it beyond just a declaration of the crisis. I am in favor of putting our hat on the ring to get money associated with that $4.9 million, I think that was the last one. I'm in favor of putting those dollars towards bricks and mortar solutions. I think it could help with the Jesus Center relocation that I've been in the market for a while studying. I'm concerned about the way that we see money spent on shelters and special needs housing, where we see an average of maybe $450,000 to $500,000 for your work. If we take a look at that $450,000 to $500,000 for your work for $4.9 million, that equates to eight units, and that's inadequate. So I think that's representative of a problem that we have with the way we're spending money. We need to find a way to get alternative means and use that money more efficiently. It's critical that we find a way to rework some of our land use regulations to allow for alternative dwelling units, which are actually being stated now through the government. But there are also other things that we can do with our land use regulations to encourage smaller and alternative housing types. We just don't have a product right now that feeds that dollar menu, so to speak, with our housing. So I'm in favor of it if the dollars are spent properly, and once we know fully what all the studies associated with the state requirements are for that, and as long as we're spending bricks and mortar solutions.
Our next respondent will be Andrew Kowrich.
Mitch, that was... That's alright, common mistake. I'd like to thank the Chamber for having this forum today and participating in these people. So this is always a great forum, and it's always great to see everybody here, so thank you for having me. In terms of the emergency shelter crisis, I was actually the person who put this item on the agenda. So it's an important avenue to explore, to explore every opportunity for funding, and this is definitely an avenue to do it. The city board realized the need for the last night. It's my belief that every city in the city, and including the county, will end up declaring the emergency shelter crisis because the funding is so important to what we do. How we use that funding, I think is certainly a topic that we can discuss as we move forward. In terms of how we actually operate, what we do with the emergency shelter crisis, I think is very important. I have been a longtime supporter of the CHAT Simplicity Village. This is not a position that I thought I would have four years ago when I took a conference. After a visit to Montomary'sville, which was where it was raised before we were in Chico 25 years ago, I noticed very well that it works, it's in a very good location for it to work, and it has a lot of positive benefits. So I think it's really along those lines that we have to look to model what we have or will have after what they have, because it is something that works, and it is a best practice that we certainly have years ago. You know, this is a... And the council gave us last night, for those of you who heard about it, does something where this issue is very important in our community on all sides, and I think I am the right candidate to work forward on this. We both have Jesus Center initiatives as well, past things that provide housing and places for our homeless population.
Thank you. Our next respondent will be Johnson.
Good morning. You know, the idea of bringing more money in the city for any issue always sounds good. The linkage almost sounds like bribery or coheed. When I see emergency shelter declaration, you know, I'm more... My mind goes to the recent car fire. Now overnight, we had 1,100 homes that were burned to the ground. And if we go with the number of about 4.5 people, we had 5,000 people that were instantly homeless. And I'd say they had an emergency. And there was no problem, there was no long debates. Every community all around opened up their arms, their hearts, their checkbooks, their houses. And, you know, those 5,000 people today, they're not homeless, they now have a home if they're not homeless. They are struggling to get back on their feet with the help of all the generous communities that surround Redding, including Chico. I personally provide donations. So when I see a declaration of an emergency shelter leaving out for a moment the money that the city can certainly use, I am definitely not a supporter of it. There's housing, it's available, there's jobs, they're available. You know, a significant number of the transient population is causing significant problems for the 99% of the state that are renters. And I think it is time that we stop apologizing to that population when we're the ones that are feeling. I'm not in any way, shape, or form in favor of emergency shelter. I'm beating the big red X, be happy to talk to all of you more about that later. And I have total respect, by the way, for the opinions of the other people.
We're moving on to Alex Brown, and what is your position on a possible emergency shelter declaration?
Thank you, Manette Cooper, for hosting this forum and giving us an opportunity to talk about our qualifications and experience in these areas. I'm fully supportive of the declaration of the shelter crisis in Chico. We are facing a housing crisis that's impacting people on various levels in our community, both those who are unhoused and people at risk of losing their housing. Declaring a shelter crisis does not solve the issue of homelessness in our community, but it does increase access to long-term solutions to address the issue of homelessness in our community. It increases our access to available funding to provide housing solutions, to provide services to people who need them, and to get people connected to the services that they need in order to move their lives forward. It also allows us to move forward with projects that have already been proposed and that have already been planned, such as Simplicity Village, which seeks to provide housing to people experiencing homelessness, provide them with services, move them forward in their lives, and continue to address the issue of homelessness in our community. In addition to that, I would like to see policies that address homelessness from a public safety standpoint take a... I would like to see those policies removed so that we can therefore increase our access to additional funding. There is funding that is available. Policies that criminalize homelessness in our community decrease our access, and I want to see us move forward with long-term and sustainable and creative solutions to addressing homelessness.
Our next respondent will be Susan.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the young city that has such a vibrant Chamber and puts on events like this. Really bring these sort of issues to the forefront, so thank you very much. So I'm kind of a doer, and I don't believe in waiting for people to do things necessarily that would need to be done. So a year ago, I was brought to the city council during the Republican forum. I asked the city council to start considering the shelter crisis. It's a year ago. We wasted a year of time that we could have been dealing with a problem that I think we've all identified we're facing, because no one here is happy that there are people on our streets, in our doorfights, in our parks. So along those same lines, just recently, since we haven't declared a shelter crisis yet, I pitched the proposal to the Chico Housing Action Team, CHAT, where the people that are responsible for the tiny house so much planning that's been proposed. And I said, why don't we do a big event where we just go ahead and build four of these tiny houses all in one weekend in 48 hours? So on October 20th or 21st, we've got a tiny house build-off. It's gonna take place, kind of like creative composition, around Park Avenue, where we'll be building four tiny houses. We can't really put those tiny houses in place until we have a declaration of shelter crisis. So declaration of shelter crisis is critical for us in order to be able to move forward with various solutions to homelessness. It opens us up to $4.9 million, as has been stated already, and that money can be used for the Jesus Center relocation, or we can entertain, we're obligated to take on any of the proposals that come forward, but we can entertain a variety of proposals for how to solve homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Our next respondent will be Ken Redsie.
Thank you very much for coming today. I really appreciate what you're undertaking as part of this in our community of Chico. It's very important on the emergency shelter declaration. I don't see that there's any harm in the city declaring the shelter emergency crisis. First, I can agree that there is one. And second, it doesn't really cost the city anything to simply declare the emergency. However, as simple speakers, we're in the picture, it does provide an opportunity for the city to access federal and state funding to help address this situation. I also support the concept of Simplicity Village in the tiny homes. It may require some modifications to the general plan, which are some requirements, but those are really rather easy decisions that we can make as a council if we're serious about helping our fellow citizens address this housing crisis. Thank you.
And finally, Casey Benz.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Katie, Anastasia, Chamber, and community members who have been here today, appreciate the time. As it stands right now, I do not support the shelter crisis. I would love to get a lot more information on it and understand exactly what strings are attached to it and what we will be required to do as a city to comply, to receive those funds. The city cannot, we've proven by the homes that we've built already with the homeless housing that we have, that we cannot be in the position of building homes. We can't do it affordably, and that money's not being spent well. And we're not gonna give you what we want out of it. Do we have a crisis in Chico? Absolutely. Do we need to look at lots of different solutions to solve those problems? Absolutely. I do know we have nine different service providers right now, providing all different kinds of services throughout our community, and not one of them are talking to each other and saying what the other do. So now we wanna add in Simplicity Village, now we wanna add in Home and Housing, we want to add in more layers to it. So I'm proposing, and what I would need with people daily on, is getting a succinct plan. If you wanna go to Portland, Oregon, you type it into your GPS, and it gives you a map on how to get there. If we don't know where we're at right now, and we don't know where we wanna go, why in the world are we just gonna put more band-aids on the problem? So I think we need to have a clear vision of where we're going. I would love to see us all come together and work together on solutions, because I think we all agree that we don't want people laying in our business or ways. We don't want people sitting in our park, we want safe community. So I want a safe community, and I want to learn more about the shelter crisis and determine if that's a responsible position for us to take.
And I spotted City Council member Carl Maury in the back, so we acknowledge him at this time. We're moving on to our second quick poll. The question is Proposition 10: Local Rent Control Initiative. Please raise your hands high if you support Proposition 10. We have asked any candidates to stand. Proposition 10, any support? Raise your hand if you oppose Proposition 10. And it looks like we don't need to ask if any decline state. Time for our next question. Do you think the city should contract out some of its functions? Which ones? Why? Or why not? First person to answer this question is the person we end with, Casey.
Awesome. So they recently tried to pass in Sacramento a bill that would stop cities from having the ability to contract things out. I think it's super important that we have the ability to do that and look at it. I think we need to have more involvement in Sacramento on policies that are being looked at because that's absolutely crucial to what we're doing. It's proven well for the city attorney. I do not know, I run an ice cream shop, so I'm not really sure what other positions at this time could be contracted out, but I think that we need to be really smart on how we're spending our money, and I think we definitely should look at different options on how we could... What areas of our government would be appropriate to contract out?
Okay, thank you. Next person, Ken.
Thank you. Yes, I think that the city should always be willing to look at different options for helping provide services to the community, and look at the cost of those services, the cost to communities, excuse me. When they ask, you know, if we should contract out services, which ones would be the thing? Well, that would be a community decision, but if you want a personal opinion, all pro and all pro, I can grab the third rail. For instance, we might wanna consider contracting Cal Fire or Fire Services. Currently, my understanding is that a fire truck rolls from the fire department, it's not going to the fire most of the time. Over 90% of the time, it's going to a car accident or some other medical emergency. In some ways, you might call them redundant technical departments. How often do we need a fire department? If there is a serious safety issue. But we don't have to be locked into organizational structures, and we can look at other ways to provide the same service at best cost. And I think perhaps research and contracting with an entity like Cal Fire might be financially beneficial to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next respondent, Andrew.
The short answer is that the city already does this. We did this on several levels. We do it on, obviously, local projects, we do it on a variety of topics where it makes sense. And I think the council has had pretty good, excellent, actually, analysis in terms of looking at this. So it's actually positive for the city, because any business owner would know. Sometimes it's better to contract out, sometimes it's better to actually have their own employees running it just because of the costs and those associated factors. So I think the city's been very diligent in actually contracting out. This was an issue that we talked about some years ago. The substantial progress has been made on this. I think the city runs very lean and efficient at this point in time, regulatory-wise, I think, and council as a whole. And I give credit where it's due, the process board has done very well, done a very good job of putting together budgets of things that's good savings towards the potential Cal Fire crisis, not really potential impending, I should say. And we've looked at this at a variety of levels, and also the contract aspect, I think we do that. We need to do it, and I think we do it in a very efficient way. In terms of contracting out of fire services, I think that's a big mistake. I trust very little with the state of Cal Fire to do, or organizations associated with them. Cal Fire's gone through several very difficult transitions. Their firefighters have been actually having increases, and they've been seeing their battle for that across the line. So I think that would be a mistake. It surrenders local control, which we certainly need, particularly in an area of public safety. So cities that have done that, and the fires that have made bad decisions and do that, I don't think that's going to be in the future.
I just wanna do a quick sound check. Can everyone in the back here, well? No, it looks like no, we haven't. So if you could, just pull the microphone up, maybe we can turn up the audio just a little bit. Our next respondent is Matt.
As an architect in the community for the last 25 years, I was a little reluctant about letting some of that control go, especially with regards to land check services and some of the things that are going on on the second floor of this hall. In the last few years, I've had better experiences with outsourcing those, and I clearly recognize that the unfunded pension liabilities that we face are huge problems, not just in Chico, but throughout the state. We have to do something, and there's very limited amounts that we can do with regards to those unfunded pensions. One of the things is to contract out certain portions of work where we're willing to relinquish control. I don't think that fireplace are examples of places where we can relinquish control. We need to have those decisions made locally, not in the state. We've seen countless examples of different jurisdictions where they have put that control into somebody else's place, and costs have gone out of control, and they've made the problem worse. So control and how those projects happen is really critical. We also can do without a project-based method, where we're letting and contracting out certain projects. I think working back and working with state legislation about how we're gonna address unfunded pension liabilities, the elephant in the room, for every one of us, we simply cannot afford the direction that we're going, and we don't have the money to do it.
Then you go to Richard.
So having spent 10 years on the Chico City Park Commission, including during the economic downturn and the economic crisis in 2008, 2009, I've seen some of the ways in which contracting out services can actually not be a service to our community. I think we should be very careful when we make those kinds of decisions. There are core functions that we as a community expect our city to service through. And so things like providing police protection, fire protection, city parks, maintaining our community ways, those are core city functions, and those are things that I hold dear as a community member, and those are things that are very, very important that the city do as in service to us. We pay for those services, and we should insist that the city provide those. There are places where contracting out city services may actually provide cost savings. And we all know how tight the city budget is, and where we need to look for savings. I'm all for that, but I don't want to see our community and our city allocate its core responsibilities. I think that when, I mentioned the park commission. When we contracted out services related to Big Bell Park, I think that that was a mistake. I think that we've seen some degradation in the park. We saw bathrooms being closed and cleaned by outside services. That was a service, those were services that were welcome, we were glad that somebody was doing it, but that should stay as a core city function. And so I think that this is something that we should be very careful of, and we need to make prudent financial decisions, but we need to make sure that the city is staying true to its mission and serving all of us as we see the need.
Thank you. Scott.
I love going toward the end so I can pick up sound lights from everybody else. Having the ability to contract out services is one thing, doing it is one another. I think there are very few city services that I think we should contract out, maybe very low-level services. I don't wanna pitch a homelet anyway, but I don't think landscaping and that sort of thing. But when we give up having our own employees and contracting out, we forfeit control of those people, and it can lead to very tragic consequences. So imagine, if you will, that we have a contracted-out tree crew that does a poor job on trimming trees around the neighborhood. Who are we gonna blame when one of those tree limbs falls on your car or on your family? A couple of examples that are going on right now, or have occurred recently. Last year, we had contracted armed security downtown. There was an incident that escalated before our police department got there, and it ended up in a shooting, eventual death, we don't need that, downtown. Not a good example of contracted services.
Not a good example of contracted services. I'd also have to take exception to the idea that our city attorney is a good example of contracted services. We have a city attorney who's suing one of our own council members. That, to me, does not seem like something that we look for when we are looking to contract out services. I'm generally opposed to contracting out services. Thank you.
John.
Well, thank you. To be honest with you, I feel like this question is just really beating around the bush. The real, the real story here is pension problems. Right now, if you were to double the city's income but not change the line of which pensions are going, eventually you run out of money anyhow. Pensions need to be fixed. The pension crisis is not the problem of the police union and the fire union or any of the other unions. Unions are supposed to fight for the welfare and benefit of their, of their class members. Problem is, is the other end of the negotiating table, which is bargaining out money we don't have and, quite frankly, never will have. And so, the idea of contracting out services, while we certainly maintain that the city should have the right and the option to contract out services, is a simple way of beating around the bush of not getting to the core problem. Pensions are out of control. They're going to eat every single dollar. I don't care how much money you put into it, if we don't change the pension system, we're going to go broke. The pension problem, again, is not the fault of those receiving the pensions. It's the fault of those who have negotiated money they don't have. If I go someplace and offer to purchase something and we make a deal and then I don't have the money, the other part is probably going to be upset, but that's exactly what's been going on for decades and decades and decades, and now the bill is due and it can't be taken. So, yes, I think the city should be able to contract out services, but I think, you know, we really need to get down to the real problem. Pension reform that doesn't screw our police, our fire, our teachers, and everybody else that makes the future sustainable.
Thank you. Alex.
I believe the city should be thoughtful and strategic when looking at options for contracting out services, and I do believe that we should honor our current contracts and our relationships with bargaining units as we're exploring this option. We are in a pension crisis, and there's efforts being made to address that crisis from various levels in support of the recent pension stabilization trust that was approved by the council to move money, put money away to address our unfunded liabilities. And I believe that we do need to continue communications with Calpers to address this crisis at the state level. This doesn't just impact our community, it impacts the entire state, and we need to find long-term solutions to this issue. There are opportunities to contract out certain services, and there are certain services that are contracted out that save us money. Our city attorney, for example, is a contracted-out service that saves us a lot in pension obligations. So I do think that we need to consider certain options while honoring our current contracts and maintaining relationships with bargaining units.
Thank you. So, quick poll. Keeping California Safe Initiative is slated for the ballot in 2020. Please raise your hand if you support. Okay, I think we have, yeah, that answers the question. Question number three. What steps would you take to promote homeownership for those just starting their careers in our community? And we will start with John.
The best way to support homeownership for those who just started careers in our communities is to make it easier to build houses. You know, when it takes thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars and years and years and hearings and fees before you can ever pound the first nail, that raises the price of a house. If you're new trying to buy your first house, that can create quite a barrier. So, we can also talk about making homeownership easy, but we actually need to do something, which is to put on the fast track approvals for affordable houses. I mean affordable houses, I mean tax-supported houses. I mean houses that can be built quickly, that are nice houses, that can be afforded by the wages earned by those starting a career in this community. That's not going to be done by years and years and years of debating about whether or not there should be six houses on an acre or seven houses on an acre. Let the marketplace decide. Builders want to build product they can sell. If they can build product, if they can sell cheaper, they will. It's pretty simple. Thank you.
Matt.
So affordability is an item that is near to my heart, obviously. I am very concerned about the cost of houses and the product level that we have available. I mentioned earlier that we have a good level of product available. On the upper level, we have nothing available. We don't have that dollar value, that dollar value menu item for housing. Our interest regulations are in a way of that, honestly. And as we talk about how long it takes to get a permit, I've seen firsthand for the last twenty-five years how difficult some of those processes can be. As a, as a business owner, another thing that I think that we should really look at is quality jobs for our people so that a good job will help pay for a good house. And if we're working in opposition to do businesses, which we technically aren't, but in practicality, I can see cases where we have projects that take fourteen months to get a permit. That's not helping the business kind of camp. That's not, that's not doing anything to help make us a business friendly community. So affordability has two hands. It's got the business side of it, it's got that homeownership side of it. So, more, the market, having more houses in the market absolutely makes a difference. And there are projects starting to work their way through right now to make that happen. I mean, why are we already tied with more density in places where it makes sense? There's another option to help bring more houses in the market to make the product more affordable.
Scott.
So in April, I invited a group, a panel of home builders, developers, experts on housing and county, housing advocates to a forum that I co-led, to discuss the issue of how to create more affordable housing within our community. One of the things that came out of that forum was, and probably is intuitive to some extent, that we haven't been building enough housing in the last decade. For a couple of decades, remember, we were building, like, many way too much. We were building twenty thousand homes a year in the nineties and the two thousands. But in the last decade, since the recession, we haven't, and we need to start building it again. I understand there's about four thousand units in planning stages right now. So creating more housing is critical to the economy and to getting young people to get into homes because it brings the overall cost down as the inventory goes up. So one of the ways to do that is smart housing. Smart housing is about mixed-use residential and commercial that puts housing next to schools and shopping and businesses and recreation so that people don't have to drive their car all around town, they can stay right within their neighborhood, educate their kids, walk their dog, and do their work. It also includes something called vertical growth. And I know people who've lived in Chico a long time may be resistant to us going up, but if we don't want to go out, if we don't want to expand into the hinterlands, into the environment that we like so much on the edge of our community, we need to consent going up. An example given would be the three-story units in the downtown neighborhood. Very attractive. They condense our town so that we can get more people and smaller areas, and greater spaces down. Thank you.
We're going to move on to Ken.
Thank you. For anyone that's ever bought a home, you know it's about a long and involved process. You sign a whole bunch of papers that you don't know anything about. Probably sign fifty signatures on things, and you end up with a house. Wait to get there, the process is long and involved and complicated, and you need some resources to get into that house. You don't just walk in with zero dollars and get a house. So what are some ways the city could help in this? I think that one thing that we can look at is the city has several what are called special planning areas. In these areas, it would be possible through development agreements and other arrangements to build a low-cost, rent-reable housing. We could also look at mixed development and, as was just mentioned earlier, vertical development. These are important to keep the city in a more compact form. Drifting off such just a little bit, presence, we have the Green Line, which has been a great policy of the city for about thirty years that has prevented a kind of urban sprawl we've seen in so many other communities of California from drifting out into the orchards towards the river. I think we could also look at perhaps establishing some sort of a mountain line or a foothill development line where we're not just continuing to develop right up into the foothills. I believe the future growth for Chico should be in there through landfill development or to the northern side along the freeway corridor and not to the east in the foothills and the west and the river. Another thing that the city could do is perhaps we could be providing some education or training opportunities to explain to new homeowners, process, some of the terminology and some of the decisions that they'll be having to make in acquiring a home. So there are some things the city could do that I think we should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Casey.
Thank you. I completely agree that affordable housing in Chico is definitely a problem right now. I think the best way to take care of that is by building, as has been said many times, multiple types of housing. We are grateful on the end if you have three hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred thousand dollars to spend on a house, that's not affordable for a young family that's just coming out of Chico State that fell in love with this community and absolutely wants to stay here and raise their family here. So we need mixed-use type housing. We need to make a permitting process and the red tape that has to be cut through for these builders to be able to build. It's got to be reasonable. You can't do surveys for two years. Meanwhile, the builder is taking on all of the incurred cost of holding the land, fighting the land, doing the permits and everything else. And then we've got to have great jobs. By having great jobs here in Chico and promoting a business-friendly environment, these young adults are going to have more money in their pocket to go out and purchase those homes and to go through those fifty pages that is stated that you have to go through in figuring all that out. So, and having a safe community, a community that everybody must live in. The more people that are here, living here, enjoying this community, paying taxes in this community, the more income we have to offset those fees and to make it affordable for everybody else. Thank you.
Alex.
As a young person who graduated from Chico State and decided to invest in this community, this issue is particularly important to me. We have a lot of talent in this community coming out of the university, coming here to start their careers, and we need to make sure that we have an availability of housing for working people and affordable housing. So I would like to see us focus on dense development so that we can house a variety of individuals. I would like to focus on smart development that takes the environment into consideration, that positions housing developments near transportation and encourages individuals to access their communities in different ways besides using their vehicles. I'd like to see incentivizing of affordable housing builds, and I would like to see us ensure the protection of our Green Line, which is our valuable, invaluable agricultural land, and our Gold Line, which is where we offer replenishes. I'd like to see us focus on infill projects and incentivizing the development of accessory dwelling units as well as single-room occupancy units.
Thank you. Andrew.
All right. First, I'd like to go back just for a second, if you can, to the Keeping California Safe issue, because I think it's worthwhile in terms of discussing about that point for a long, interesting question. For those of you who don't know, I want you to know, and that's why I'm coming back to this issue. This is the one that repeals some of the implications of Proposition 47. So Proposition 47, 57, and 82 are not, are tossing a ton of problems in saving California. I think we all realize that. I think we all like our legislature to set those back, but I think as citizens, we can rise up and do this. This is things, Proposition 47 made things like sex trafficking in certain spaces, early release, it also made rape by intoxication early release, drug rape of unconscious person early release, solicitation to commit murder early release. This is probably the most important issue that we have to move forward on. That may have the biggest impact in our state. It was a mistake for the voters to pass this. I know people have voted for it, and they did not understand that that is a serious problem. So if we get on with the question in itself, the, what would we do, what I do, promote homeownership? I can tell you what the city council in Chico doesn't do, is promote homeownership. We add thousands of dollars every year to the price of our home in Chico, and then in the very same meeting, complain about the fact that there is not housing enough to house people in the city of Chico. This is complete hypocrisy. State of California has the toughest regulations in the entire world to build a home, and we must roll those back to get out of our forty-year housing crisis that this state has been moving towards.
Thank you. And Rich.
Great, thank you. So having spent twenty-four years working in the technology sector as a communications manager for two, primarily two homegrown local software companies, I know what it's like to sit across the table from somebody who is a Chico State graduate or who is looking to relocate to Chico and have this conversation with them about how, if they were to come to work for our company, how would they afford to find a home, buy a home, and dig in and make their roots here? It's, it's often a lottery, and so this is, this is an important issue. I think that the lack of overall inventory in our housing supply is at the core of this particular part of that problem. The lack of availability of all different types of housing. We have, for the last ten to twenty years, we've built plenty of large, large homes that well-established, large families can afford, but we have not built nearly enough smaller units, civil resident units, and affordable housing. We need to find ways to decrease the red tape to incentivize developers to build that type of housing. We also need to look at examples where we're actually doing a pretty good job of this. I would cite Marion Park as a development that's been in the works for a long, long time. Many of us have been watching that project for years, and now we're starting to see some traction there. And that's not only a location where mixed-use building is happening, but where the entire mixed-use neighborhood is happening. It's those kinds of neighborhoods that will not only attract quality, new, young professionals, but will provide a place where they can afford to buy homes and really settle and contribute to our community.
Time for our last quick poll. So currently, public safety is listed as the number-one city council priority. Raise your hands if you believe this should remain the council's number-one priority in the next term. And we'll stop there. So, last question, which it seems will give us some time after we conclude this for you to interface with the candidates if they're able to stay for a little bit and enjoy some coffee. Last question. Make two specific improvements you'd make to Bidwell Park for the public good, and I want to put a little point on this question. We're asking this question because we continue to survey any professionals in the community, and Bidwell Park remains the top one list for community assets. So going forward, looking at the future of Chico, Bidwell Park is important. So we're going to go ahead and start with Ken.
Thank you. Two specific recommendations that I would make. One is most of the people I've known as riding a wheelchair. I've been in a wheelchair for thirty-three years and I've been one for the rest of my life. I've lived in Chico for thirty-three years, and I go to the park all the time with my daughter. And we walk primarily on the north side, on the paved road, start at the entrance just past five mile, come towards the freeway overpasses and back, and there are only a couple of camp sites that are truly wheelchair-accessible. The rest are done. I'm not saying that every camp site needs to be accessible, but I think in a community as ours, inclusive as ours, we could have more than a couple of camp sites accessible because a number of times I've gone and those camp sites were already taken. because a number of times I've gone and those camp sites were already taken. So that would be one idea. Secondly, between one mile and five mile, there's no go restroom facilities. If you're walking between one mile and five mile and the need arises, you don't have a lot of options because there aren't any restrooms around that area. So I think we could also look at providing some additional restrooms, primarily in the area between one mile and five mile. Thank you.
Alex.
Thank you. The parks are one of the gems of our city, and we need to invest in them and ensure that they are well-maintained. I'm an active park user and believe that our community is incredibly proud of the parks that we have to offer in the North State. I would like to kind of reiterate the question in terms of what I would support. There are a variety of groups that participate in keeping our parks safe and keeping our parks clean. I would like to support volunteers who spend countless hours patrolling our parks for safety and ensuring that our community is well-supported. And I would also like to offer my support for groups that participate in cleanups and maintaining our parks. We're a leader in this area, and people come to Chico to access the amazing natural resources that we have to offer. I believe that there are a variety of groups that utilize our parks that will be willing to invest in their maintenance and collaborating with those groups, collaborating with the university, collaborating with CAR to ensure that we have additional revenue sources to maintain our parks is of the highest priority.
Thank you. John.
Thank you. There's, the issue for me with the parks is people aren't going to use them if they don't feel safe. And I've spoken to a significant number of people who don't feel safe in the parks, and I'm talking about daylight hours, nighttime hours, I think at this point, are the pretty same in the park. So a couple of specific recommendations is that we really look at, and we aren't going to be able to look at the uniform closing times, but we can maybe tighten that up a little bit more. And I would correlate that with law enforcement having the ability to respond quickly, at least in the lower park area. For the upper park, there's been a lot of back and forth about access issues. And I would use this as an example. We do not have a staircase in Yosemite to the top of Capitan, right? Some parts of upper park need to remain rural. They don't all need to be rural. You should have paved roads to some extent. Some part, I'll be, and I apologize to you, Ken, that there's certain parts of the park that I just think you probably can't get to because you can't make everything accessible for everybody all the time, everywhere. I mean, if you, with the job of a captain to preserve a ship and never leave port, your point is well-taken also. We certainly need more access in some locations, but I would leave some parts of the park rural. Thank you.
Scott.
So I'm a regular park user, probably hike in the park three days a week, three seasons of the year. The summer I kind of become a chief, but the rest of the year I'm up there a lot. So I do have strong feelings about the park. There's been an idea floated recently regarding parking fees or parking pass. While I'm not completely opposed to that, I would put so many restrictions on it and so many exemptions on it, that it probably wouldn't be worthwhile. I'd want to exempt seniors and students and the disabled and low-income from having a payment fee. By the time you take all those people out there, you're probably not making much money on your parking pass. So my idea was, Laston Park Foundation does a great job in that park of being what's called a friend's room and raising funds for projects within the park. So I'm pretty confident that we could get a thousand Chicoans to pay an annual membership and support Bidwell Park Foundation where they got a decal and a patch and a T-shirt. I'm pretty sure that we could raise a lot of funds on an annual basis to support the park without mandating that people pay extra to park the park. The second issue, I asked for two solutions. I'd like to see in Upper Park, I'd like to see more trash cans, alone trails, so you have a place to dump those older dog poop bags, because there never seems to be one and you don't have to carry it for two or three miles or four or five minutes. There you have it.
Thank you. Matt.
Well, I too am a frequent user of that park, and so one of these is going to be an interesting suggestion, and that is that we attract a volunteer force to help move the basins of the park. Last week riding up my bike through the park, I just got annihilated by a star missile. And I would love to see people, I mean, my name is Walter, my dad, go out there and go start pulling, pulling some star missile. Again, I agree that we cannot, as a city, afford, we don't have the money to put additional resources in there. We need to prioritize. I agree with the concept of having, in the direction that we've gone, with increasing safety in the region and having additional trained officers who are going to be out there shortly. And I also agree with the concept of going forward and making this a cleaner place. Again, going back into my two components of having a safe and attractive place to be. So short of that, you know, in terms of other ideas and where else we might do things, I strongly encourage a volunteer force, and I support the positions that we have to increase safety in the area. I hate hearing the stories from people, and I've had a number of conversations lately about the park, and people say that they don't feel comfortable going there, that they can't go because they don't have a friend to walk with them, and so they're just not going to head up there. That breaks my heart. I love the park, I live alone, bro, I do yoga every day, ride my bike up to Bearhold, and believe it or not, I do. Anyway, I love it, enjoy it. My wife and I partake in it as much as we can in terms of items, so thank you.
Andrew.
All right. Well, I appreciate this question being on here. When I came into office, the gates in the bathrooms quite often were locked in rural Midwell Park. That was just four short years ago when we were facing a massive budget crisis, twenty million dollar budget crisis, of which we are still not out of the weeds entirely. So this city, first off, to ensure that we have proper ours, must manage that fund and manage it in a way that's correct, forward-thinking, and actually start saving for pension money. You know, we have three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight acres of park in this. We do not have a staff to manage them. A big part of that problem has been the massive accident that took place in two thousand fourteen, thirteen, that we should never go back to and stay clear of in terms of our budget. In terms of the park itself and what to do, I put forward a program, and most people kind of were surprised by this because obviously very fiscally conservative, but we put forward a program to plant trees in Lower Park, and that was a program that I believe very much that I'd like to see the city council do on a yearly basis, planted a hundred trees in the Lower Park to build our stock for future years, so we will have old trees standing and we will have middle-sized and smaller old trees as we go forward. You know, fire is a huge issue when it comes to the park. We've saw that, obviously, over the last couple of months, it's devastated our community, so we must get station fire back up and running. I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to see a full staff. And then, you know, we need to make sure that our park employees actually have the ability to lease the park, and as I put forward in the Chico Safe Now initiatives, it would be great if we could have park closure times that went across the board for all city parks at the same time. Thank you.
Casey.
So I absolutely agree, Andrew, with what you said, that we cannot go backwards on our budget, and the number-one key to keeping Bidwell Park affordable and safe for us all to use is by making sure we spend our budget wisely and keep our police department funded and our fire department funded, so we don't lose the beautiful park that we have. As the mom of a special needs child who does have access issues, stepmom, by the way, but I absolutely agree that access is a huge thing. I do not support limiting access to Bidwell Park. It was given to us all to use, to enjoy and to love, and it's literally the heart of our community, and I would hate to see the access cut off for anybody, so we do need to keep it definitely accessible. And the next thing, to keep it a safe, nobody's going to want to use Bidwell Park if they're like me, who walks in the park every morning, and your dog, it's off-leash time, your dog loves to go down old trails, and your dog comes back up bleeding because it just had bit by a pit bull that was, and I ended up with a two thousand dollar bill to take my dog to the vet. So it needs to be a safe place for all of us to go, to take our children and enjoy. So we need to keep the access open and to keep it safe.
And Rich.
So the question asks for two specific things that you would do. I'll give you two. I would reinvest in a fully-staffed treatment crew, and I would seek grant funding to improve the infrastructure, primarily the roads throughout Upper and Lower Park. This is really an area of our community and of my record that I'm very, very proud of. I'll mention again, I served for ten years on the Park Commission from two thousand four until two thousand fourteen. Three of those years I chaired the commission. We dealt with all of these issues for those ten years, and I'm proud of much of the work that we did. Many of the things that we faced were challenges, but we worked through them, and we were good stewards of Bidwell Park. Bidwell Park is, I describe often as the heart and lungs of our community, and investing in the park is part of investing in the infrastructure of our entire community and our entire city. It's also a way of making sure that that ecosystem is healthy so that it can accomplish part of what its mission is, which is things like carbon sequence, sequestration. So if we maintain the park and we maintain the urban canopy, the forest canopy, and we maintain the trees, then we're doing ourselves a service on many levels, including recreation, but not just limited to that. I also think that maintaining the park and maintaining access to the park is critical to the vibrancy of our community. When we talk to people about what they love the most about Chico, the park is almost always at the top of the list. We need to make sure that that continues to be the case, and that takes investing our resources, our time. We need to support people like the friends of Bidwell Park, who are getting a lot of volunteer work in half for years and years that we're talking about here, as well as Park Watch, you know, volunteers doing important work. We need to...
Thank you. But if you want to take a breath, we are starting our closing statements. Each candidate will have a minute, and we will begin with Rich. Love the job.
I love Bidwell Park, it's about the last thing I can say. So thank you again for spending your morning with us, and I want to thank my fellow candidates. It's really a generous act that you all are doing, enjoying us and sharing your ideas and sharing your passion for the community. I thank you all very, very much, and I thank you all again for spending your morning with us. Kate and I moved to Chico twenty-four years ago. We immediately fell in love with this town. We raised two amazing kids in Chico who are now off successfully in launching their college career. We are passionate about this community, I'm passionate about this community, and I'm excited about the work ahead of us. We need to improve our sense of collaboration and coordination, we need to break down barriers and recognize that there's more than unites us than divides us. That's in my DNA, that's what I'll bring to this role, and I'm asking for your vote, and I'm asking for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think we have another slide announcement.
There are two cars parked in the bike lane across the street at the post office, and they will be taken, so this is your heads up if you're parked in the bike lane at the post office.
I don't think we have other information, but okay. All right, so we will continue with our closing statements, and we'll move on to Matt.
Well, if you haven't already or seen it, I'm for a safe, affordable, and attractive Chico. Let's dive into those three words a little bit. Safety, I support our police department, our fire department, and we need to do whatever we can to continue with those things. I'll elaborate on safety a little bit more, and I'll add public works to that mix. I've had some conversations recently where I've come to learn how much those guys are taxed with some of our safety components, and we don't really always think about that part, but I would throw that in the mix as well. On the affordable component, we talked a lot about housing, housing, making sure that we have a wide variety of housing options is one of my key goals, and making sure that our land use regulations don't get in the way of those housing types. But affordability goes beyond just housing. The cost that our businesses in Chico pay for things like shrink, which is a term that they use for disappearing stock within their store, shrink and the cost of rent, they all affect what we pay for...
Sorry, Matt.
Yeah, oh, no, sorry. I'm too short.
Moving on to Casey.
Thank you all again for coming this morning. I would like to implore all of you, after coming out of last night's city council meeting that was very heated and very lively, I am determined to somehow bring a way for all of us to work together. This is about Chico. This is not about the left, this is not about the right, this is about the community of Chico. And so I would like to go and represent this community, of which my business has done for eighty years, my family has done for years, I've given back to the community for years, I would like to do it as your city council representative, to bring the community together so we can somehow find solutions to these very, very difficult problems that we are faced with. I want to be a part of the solution, not a part of the obstruction, and I, any questions that any of you have.
Thank you. Over to Andrew.
All right. I'd like to thank the Chico Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum today. When making your decision for council, I encourage you to choose candidates who are capable of managing the city budget in excess of a hundred million dollars. This is not a job for those without successful experience, whether it be running a business or serving the community, or school board, or community organization. In two thousand thirteen, we became well aware of what happens when you have unqualified managers on the council. We led our city to near financial disaster. As a city council for the last four years, I've always put the public and the public safety at the top of my concerns, fighting for increased staffing in Chico PD as well as returning our fire department to recommended staffing roles. As the author of the Chico Safe Now Proposals, I push for ordinances and actions by the council, which is those that need a hand up, and laws which seek to protect our students, families, and local businesses. My name is Andrew Foolish, and I'm asking for your vote once again in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Alex.
Thank you. Thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum, to all of you for being here. My name is Alex Brown. I am a marketer and business developer for a local behavioral health organization, and I also provide freelance marketing services for local businesses in the area. My background is largely in social services. I moved to Chico ten years ago, got two undergraduate degrees, and then received my master's degree in social work. I've worked in various social service settings, from a direct service standpoint as a counselor and an advocate, to a prevention standpoint, preventing violence and other issues in our community, to an administrative perspective, implementing policy and coordinating with a variety of stakeholders on a variety of issues. These skills directly translate to my ability to lead the city in a smart, strategic, and sustainable way. I hope for your vote, and I hope to talk with you more about my policy priorities. Visit alexbrownforcouncil.com to learn more about me, and let's talk.
Thank you. John.
First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to thank all the other candidates. We have some diverse views, but that doesn't mean that anybody here cares for Chico any less than anybody else, so you all have my appreciation. I feel like I'm in great company. Having said that, I may not be your candidate. If you think that causing transience at the expense of the ninety-nine percent of us are just out there working hard every day, I'm not your candidate. If you believe that the pension crisis is just going to solve itself magically, we're going to have some conversations and move something a little left, a little right, and the problem's gone, I'm not your candidate. On the other hand, if you believe that so far the response to the pension crisis has been nothing more than rearranging the debt shares in the Titanic, I might be your candidate. If you're sick and tired of seeing the debt... If you're sick and tired of seeing the detriment and degradation of downtown every corner, I might be your candidate.
Thank you. We're getting a lot of comments.
Thank you very much. Chico's been my home and my passion since the nineteen-seventies. I've served in a variety of leadership roles since I've been here. I was the trustee on the school board from two thousand two to two thousand six, president of the Chico Association of Real Dudes in nineteen eighty-eight, and I served as the president of Altical Autonomy Society, which is a conservation organization here, with a wide variety of roles. The reason I decided to get involved in this race was I saw a lack of respect at the city council level. The tenants that guide my campaign will guide me in leadership of the city council on respect, civility, openness, inclusiveness, transparency, and empathy. My name is Scott Kehmer, and we gratify you to have your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And finally, Ken?
Thank you to the chamber for providing this forum. You may ask, what is Ken Grant Saint going to do for you if elected to the city council? My answer is simple. As a longtime non-party person and former two-term planning commissioner, I bring the experience and independent voice to the council. The last few councils have taken prize, only Democrats and Republicans. Oh, I have great respect and friendship for meaning both parties. I believe party parts from rhetoric is making it harder to define and redefine the choices for Chico. All of the main political party candidates would accept five hundred dollars from you, and they accept PAC money, union money, and business money. I only accept contributions from people for a maximum of one hundred dollars. I do not accept contributions from union sources. This is my commitment to remain free from big money and political party pressure. Together, we can bring a much needed voice to the city council. Learn more at KenForChico.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In closing, we'd like to invite everyone to our Young Professional Organization City Council Candidate Mixer, and this will be on October seventeenth at Grand Tavern in the evening. And this will be an opportunity to kind of mix legal with the candidates, and maybe ask for questions you don't get to today. Everybody is invited. Kelly here, Givens, who is voluntary as our timekeeper, is president of the YKO. If you have a promise, we plead to Kelly that you're coming, candidates, please do so today. We also wanna close with a couple of thanks to our legacy partners, our missionary partners, CAR, Mor Valley Act Services, VCAC TV for making today possible. I'd like to thank Anastasia for moderating the forum with me this morning. And I'd like to thank all of you and the candidates for participating this morning. Have a great day.